All right, happy new year, everyone. I might just call our first regular select board meeting on January 4th, 2023 to order. The time is 6:38 PM. Present in the room is Steve Madder. Good. Our videographer from Fat TV, Mark Bills, our road supervisor, Stan Noda, Bruce Mello, and myself, Dot Maggio as our select, select board. Any changes to the agenda at this time? Going on to item number three, it says, "Review and approve the minutes from the December 21st, 2022 meeting." We did not get any minutes from Peter Barris. I am going to, I got his phone number tonight. I'm gonna call him and talk to him directly. He did put in for payment from the 21st, I checked here, but he didn't submit the minutes. I'm not sure what happened. As far as tonight goes, I guess we just need to make note of motions and so on and so forth.
I asked that.
How, can I ask this gentleman?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm offering to do the minutes.
Okay.
But I, I'm looking at the technique that I would be easiest for me to use. When you record this tonight, how long does it take before it appears on Fat TV?
On my website or on the television channel?
Website.
On a website. I notice it's not coming through the television channel. None of the towns are.
I don't know, but I could, I will make a note to ask Alex.
Okay. Okay.
When, when it's available.
Yeah, because what, what I'm about to say is that if, if it's available within two days, I don't mind logging into the site and looking at, you know, what was shown in the movie and dictating into Microsoft Word by microphone the minutes for the meeting. It's quicker.
Okay.
It's, you know, I, I have to use the keyboard, but a very limited manner. And, you know, do it. And I'm hoping that it would save the town the, the $1,800 that's been costing us in doing that. By just doing it that way. If it becomes a pain in the butt for any reason because of other things that come up and there's choices to be made, I'd be happy to let you know that fact and.
And they did put that on the agenda for us to discuss, then we can see for that recording clerk.
Yes, I don't know if this is the time to do that or not, but if it's not, you just kind of subtly.
I, it is recording to their computer right now as well, so if we let that save, then it will be on this computer.
Well, I, I have a question to ask you because the last time you, Alex left, the meeting had gone away. The computer was on, and what it was saying was something to the effect that it needed to download or finish rec, finish capturing the recording. And I didn't know how long that was gonna take. I was tired and I just shut it off. So I don't know if I disrupted.
I think, I think when you reopen Zoom, it will continue to do that.
Oh.
There's no, I understand.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, so we will, we have no minutes to approve at this time, so we're gonna move on to members of the public. There are no scheduled or unscheduled members of the public. Right, so we can go right down into budget review and town meeting review. You should have gotten from Alyssa a copy of, updated.
Well, we, we need four. But I did only get two.
Four. I got four.
From her?
Four pages.
All in one. I didn't. All filled in? She sent me something. I saved it to my down file. When I went in, I did not find it this afternoon. So I assumed that I had already put it into the budget for physically your 24 file. And so there were, there were four files. I went and opened every single one.
Yeah.
One was complete for highway, one was complete for municipal side of things. I, I didn't have one there that showed both complete. So I'm glad it was done.
Yes, that's the same as, yeah.
Sorry.
She popped those numbers in there. Do you need help, Bruce? Here comes Stan, he's gonna help you.
I'll move on myself. Such a real shame, to go right to the, to the road. I'm gonna put the two numbers in.
I wanna go back.
The second. Oh, oh, you have it there. That's not where it's at. You give me the comment then?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going like this again. Okay, that's, that's nice. So we still two, let's start. What would you do if that was? Oh, wow. So the order, yeah, what is the scenario? Yeah, more. What's the one? Was, which? That's one. Oh, right. You okay? Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wanted to bring you up. Let's help be on the same page.
Yes.
The yellow cat still up there.
Say again?
The yellow cat.
Is it still up there? We didn't see, she put it, I mean, how did she?
Yeah.
Do you want me to, I can bring you some stuff for the meeting, but. I can take care of that for you. I'll talk to you about it later. All right.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, all right. So now we're on, just quickly taking a look at the first chunk here, which is the town operating expenses. The only thing, we don't add anything for con or delinquent taxes because we don't know that. There is no hunting or fishing license and there's no refunds, investments. What was added in here is the school house rental revenue. Okay, of $226,400 a year. Is that the correct amount?
Sounds it.
For the, for the 23 to 24.
I got, did you get the copies of?
I did, I did. I didn't, I didn't look at it.
It's 2,000 a month and then it goes to.
33.
200. I'll pay for that. So we're looking, 22 times 12. No, 22 times 6, I need, which would be 13, too. And.
2,200 times.
2,400, it's on here.
Okay.
That's correct. All right, so that's been added there as an income. Under the second column here, town operating expenditures. We, we went down here.
Second column. You said column.
Second section. Okay, town operating expenditures excluding separately warned articles. You noticed that she put in the $3,000 under the delinquent tax collect there. And we, we reduced the lister's wages to 5,000. And then there is nothing under election officials, so that can be left blank because I'm not sure why that was there before. Everything else is the same. The last item here, we did reduce the, we did reduce supplies and postage from, to $3,750 and added in a line item that. This has got separated here, but. For hotel office equipment. And, and you were talking about putting that through, from a, from a ARPA money. You were gonna transfer.
Well, if you want it, I mean, stuff like computers and stuff like that, so much of you're referring to what, like what guy was asking, that we should replace some of the equipment.
Yes, he wanted $1,000 increase on his postage and supplies budget. And we decide, then it was a discussion to pull, pull it out, I think you were in.
With the postage.
And pull it out.
Supplies, it was the.
Post and supply.
Away from the office, right?
Right, just imply make an office equipment.
Because the office equipment is just a one-shot, probably just a one-shot deal.
Not necessarily, could not, maybe not.
Over time, it is periodically. I almost bought shares this past year.
Yeah, and I don't know why they didn't do that order.
So, so leaving that, that, that would not be a tax, you don't have to worry about that. It's not going to increase our tax burden at this time.
If you finish $1,200, gets the computers, we should take that, my, my opinion, take that ARPA. That's, that's, I think that's a lot of this.
I don't really care which way we go.
Yeah, we can discuss it all later.
Yeah, we're trying to, so.
We've got a lot of, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I think, that's my thing. Can we take, we take any expenses that he wants to change for computers and stuff out of, out of ARPA? I don't know how you feel about it. I, I just try to do the best I can to minimize the tax increase. That's all I'm trying to do, Stan.
Yeah.
I think it's obvious.
It's, I, I, you don't know, do you want to go around the table or what do you think?
I was fine with this. I just won't say that we don't need to put a number in there because it's not going to affect our tax rate at this time. And we can determine when we discuss ARPA, putting it into.
If we're gonna go the upper, then it doesn't.
Correct.
That's what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So what is ARPA? I have no problem.
Okay. And we didn't put anything under planning commission. They didn't use any, and they haven't met, so.
All right.
All right, so now.
So we get the road expenses, that's all those.
Then we're at, the second page is expenditures continue, continue to, you should all say election grant. It starts with zero, okay. And moving down the page, we did do a reduction. You notice under fire alarm, that was reduced to 300 correctly. We asked her to do that under town.
Or down here. Oh, no, I lost you. Right.
Fire alarm, we reduced it from 500 to 300.
Yeah, true.
Okay. Moving down the page, town property maintenance. I pointed out that the car tree and the sign, it should come from the highway fund and not for town property maintenance. And so she is, has made those corrections. And we put in this proposal for a fee of $4,650, which is correctly identified in our type sheets. Then we went down the line and under insurance and town bonds, you look down the cross. We put $5,500 in that line item, which was blank at the last meeting, and that's it for this page. Okay, recycling collection remains at 18,000. We reduce it to $18,000 for the, for the upcoming year. Third page, current taxes.
Well, I'm sorry, she's not.
There's, where's that? That last one you just referred to? Insolent state fee, buyer permit. Oh, recycling, okay.
Okay.
And that's, isn't that, isn't that gonna be, it's gonna be warranted separate, okay, which is why it's not in the column to be added.
That's correct. Right. All right, moving up onto the top of the third page, it says town highway revenues. Is that the third page? Okay.
It's the fourth, I think, to me.
Yeah.
It's what?
Because the third page is the, the optional donations to.
Is that the third page?
That's my third.
That's separated by me, so I don't know what page you hit. Take it, take it back. All right, so the page is special appropriations revenue, current taxes, and special appropriations revenue. Where she has nothing in there at this time. Well, let's see.
We got a lot of blanks, that's a good thing.
Okay.
We have.
Hold on.
I'm sorry. You have a page on, on some of this stuff?
My fourth page on the original. No, I don't have anything here because we don't have any current taxes to put in.
You're talking about them, sorry.
Right, very, very. Okay, Brown Works Collaborative, again, nothing came in from them. When, when Women's Freedom Center doesn't appear to have anything in there.
Sweet.
Youth Services, we did not receive anything from there. There was something, hold on, from, that I was going through. I was looking at this a little earlier and. All right, so as you move down here, Valley Cares, we did not seem to have anything from Valley Cares this year, still.
We got a email from Valley Cares, I think it came in yesterday or today, indicating, you know, something to be put in our town report.
Really?
Yeah.
There's nothing mentioned.
I think it was, I'm crazy.
Well, I don't think it would be, I don't know. There, let me just go through again, look for Valley Cares. There is something for Red Cross, though, which wasn't on this sheet. The Red Cross has a appropriations request of $250 in front of it.
Okay, so this changes.
Allen Place, Grace Cottage Hospital, Marina, Brooklyn. What is this? I don't recognize, hang on. Historical Society?
Yeah, that's in here.
It's in here?
Yeah, it's for 250.
All right, Warfree Public Library, we have New York Newsletter, we have Senior Solutions, this is on there.
Can we get this in a minute? They finished the whole page.
Senior Solutions request.
You haven't got that? So redicating the current Southeastern Watershed, Southern Vermont riding.
Valley Cares, here's one, Valley Cares, $821.
Okay.
It has to be added in. I will let you know, $821 from Valley Cares came December 8th. That's the date on it. Family Network.
It's been on here for a while, because this is the fourth year of request.
Vermont Family Network?
Yeah.
Vermont.
Where's that?
There is.
It's the, there is. 250.
Vermont Family Network, yes, all right, 250. Yes, thank you for your support. And then there is Vermont Center for Independent Living. Requesting $80. $80 for Vermont Center for Independent Living. Visiting Nurses is here, $1,000. Winston Prowdy. Do you see that, Winston Prowdy? Is that, or something else?
No.
Winston Prowdy, application for social services, funding for the town of Brooklyn. Thank you for considering our request. It doesn't have everything now here.
Okay.
Please write down and place the 2020 appropriations when we review appropriations at the first, okay, why?
Because we didn't give anything last year, did we? I believe so. I don't think we did. Because they just started to start running again within the last couple of years.
Okay, 300, a formal request from $300.
With some proudy?
Yes.
What's the date of the request?
October 20th.
Wow.
How much is it?
$300.
Okay.
$300, okay. Youth Services, did we see anything for Youth Services? Okay, there is one for Youth Services here, up to, over in October 17th, request of $255. Let's make sure we get that in there. $255. So the only ones I haven't seen are Brown Works, Women's Freedom Center, the current Southeastern Watershed Alliance.
And.
V A B V.
And the riding, Southern Vermont riding.
Yeah, they didn't request anything. They didn't get it left. Yes, and that's Southern Vermont Riding. And what is this VA Vermont Association for the Blind?
I think that's what that is. Yes, I didn't see it in here. I'm gonna look real quick, but. It's like the eighth one from the bottom, V A B V I.
Oh, okay. 3 bucks.
Ninth one.
All right, no, I don't see that either.
You don't?
I don't see it in this, that four gathering place, Grace Cottage, Marina, historical society, women's county, one of three libraries, Senior Solutions, Senior. Seves. Seves, Valley Cares, right? Vermont Family Network, Independent Living, V C I L. That's.
I have no idea what that is.
Vermont V C I L.
Vermont Center for Independent Living.
Right, Vermont Center for Independent Living. Is it written out in here?
Yeah, it is. It's on to the top. Asia.
$50, sorry, you said that one already. Okay, okay. That's it. This is the Winston Prowdy. And Youth Services.
No.
You see, 255.
Correct.
Right. And then Humane Society. 500 and, oh, here, Vermont Association for the Blind. There's another one. I think I'm not, so I don't know why I did the.
Hundred bucks.
Hundred bucks. Vermont Association for the Blind. Okay, so these are the appropriations that have been submitted.
Okay. And there's a dramatic increase in, we can talk about this later. I'm gonna talk about the town book. A 400 buck increase in Warfree, Warfree, Warfree Public Library.
I thought with the understanding was that every appropriation that has not changed, that has been accepted, we produce enough one warning.
Yes.
And anything that's gone up would be an individual, and anything a thousand dollars or over would be an individual.
I'm with you.
I like that. That's what I.
I like that, yeah, okay.
All right, so I'm not gonna sit here and calculate, but I think they're closed on the appropriations at this time.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Last page, current taxes, they've said, "composed based upon what we have right now, significantly $355,492." Do realize that this is because we have asked this town to help cover the cost for FEMA. And that is the major reason why. And, and, and that, that will be, in another year, will be hopefully rolled back.
The other way.
Roll the other way.
Okay.
Correct.
So I understand that we're not quite done yet with FEMA projects. And right now they owe us roughly $140,000.
$190,000.
We haven't spent it all. We haven't, it's gonna be closer to that number, but we haven't spent it. So we put in 30,000 for, for hours and 40,000 for materials in addition to the regular highway budget. So we put in another 70,000 of that. So, yeah, it's gonna be close to the Stan's number, but it's, at that point, but we don't, yeah.
So it's just an ongoing thing with them?
We haven't had this all done by December of next year.
Okay, and then they pay us after that supposedly?
Yes.
That's how that works?
Correct.
And we can't get.
We had two of our.
We can't get paying anything before that?
We could. They're not making any. I have no control over that.
I know you don't.
Yeah.
But I was gonna make a suggestion. I know I could be just pooping in the wind. Maybe a call to Bernie Sanders to find out why we're not getting our FEMA money?
I'm all for it sometimes, I know.
Okay, let's fight about it for a second. Dot, you fight on your side.
Don't fight him, just.
I'm being a punky.
Yeah, so maybe there may be FEMA likes to have everybody closed. This is, we are a very small town and this, we, even though it's been very expensive for us personally as a town, it is one of the smallest FEMA situations compared to other towns. So I, I, I wouldn't be making waves until we get our, our numbers all organized. We're not organized. We still have to give them numbers.
I certainly have my stop on the.
To get over.
I actually want to stop on the. So what do you think, Stan?
Because he sighs a big sigh.
Oh, money.
I actually didn't notice that number there. That's a large number.
It is. Step on their toes on what they, what, what we're entitled to by doing.
If you would like to contact, I'll give you all the FEMA people, youth people.
I'm not gonna FEMA. Why, why all FEMA?
Well, because they're the ones that could tell you when or what. They're more apt to give you an answer than, than Bernie Sanders.
Okay. Okay. Maybe I'm staying.
Read in the newspaper last week that another town in Wimackan did contact Saunders Office to ask for his intervention in getting the money from that.
Really?
I, I, I don't recall.
Huh.
But that's just, looking through the things in the paper, there was a, noted in the town's summary of events that happened in that town. So he either had a select board meeting that was advertised or referred to in the news media, but it did refer to that having been done.
So the town have all finished with their projects.
Well, we.
And have been finished with their project.
Yeah, we're looking to bang on you. But we were promised money at the end of June and we saw.
He took that promise to the end.
He should have, but he works for that. He doesn't work for anybody else.
He doesn't work for them anymore.
He doesn't?
I, I, okay, you're done.
No, I'm done.
I, I would, I would suggest that since Dot and
Mark.
Mark have been working on it together, they probably have a feel for where they can push and where they can't. And I, I would like to support them in that area. I don't feel either one of them is of the nature to do something that's disadvantageous to the town. So if you feel it's something that we should hold off.
At this point, it's hold off on.
And I would, I would go along and support you.
Right. And like I said, if we get together to meet and we talk about this brick grant, which is another FEMA grant, which is on the agenda for later on, we can also cross-reference into this and I can show you where we're at on. So.
I'm not gonna stick my snide nose in the middle of it because I haven't done any work on it. I'm just a bit annoyed when they, when we had a storm that happened two years ago and we haven't had a blood sent pending to cover it.
Projects have been what they call obligated. She said the FEMA has sent them to the state of Vermont, which case maybe Bernie could help us on that, but I'm not sure which two, two, two projects off the top of my head to tell you to reserve.
Two projects in that whole thing.
Yes.
So basically, we could get, not to go out. So basically, we could get, not to go out and on about it, but basically, we, we could get this money piece meal, depending on how, when their work was done. At a point which was done.
Doesn't sound like we know that.
I don't know.
I've not heard anything that you said that indicate this coming, one shot or two shots.
No, I, I'm guessing.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
We don't know.
Okay.
I'm saying, my thought is be open to anything, because we don't know what they operate.
Yeah, I don't know how they operate.
Mm-hmm.
How.
It's, it's very frustrating data, I, I'm with you on that, man.
Yeah, how do we explain to the town, the world?
It's easy, it's, we don't, we gotta raise money, because of, you know, the question I'm concerned about.
We got no roads.
You know, we, we have two other sources that possibly can do this, and that is the, the Bridge Fund.
That.
You know, and that's about eighty thousand, which we reduced that. Uh, so we're only sixty thousand on our pocket right now, and hopefully through this year, you know, the difference. You know, could be a lot less to cover, forty-five thousand, but, but that's, that's the easiest option, because I suspect that what happens with the ARPA money. If we use the ARPA money to bill or reduce that number, at some point, we're gonna get paid by FEMA, and then I might even have to go back into the ARPA account. And I'm not sure how easy that bookkeeping question is, it's something that Melissa would need to look at and answer.
Uh-huh, but.
But for what we're doing right now, we don't need to get into the weeds on that, I would say.
Well, I don't know, if this is the last time we're talking about it before we send this for town report, it's, the weeds are gonna grow up at some point, either at the personal light in light town meeting that we're gonna have. Uh, or we can talk about it now and anticipate what, what other op, actions there are to limit the amount of impact to the tax rate, because if we. When you look at that versus what it has been, it's a significant increase.
Um.
It's just ridiculous.
Um, Melissa said she would give us an accurate number after we submitted our final.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Do we have to approve this now?
No, we just.
Okay.
So we can do that then?
So it'll be one more meeting.
Correct.
Go over everything finally, but it's something that sounds like they ought to be looking at.
Yes.
You have to do something. This freaking branch is going anywhere.
Okay, okay. I don't wanna be here late.
So, Ellen, hi. That is, um, doesn't seem to have anything that needs to be filled in here, now.
Where, where, where's that?
Very fine.
Kind of.
Revenue.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, right, okay, so the transfer in is zero. I do have a question about Highway Salt Shed Grant.
Transfer in is the money that you transferred in from ARPA to the salary to cover marks. Now, I don't know if that needs to be researched, that it needs to go back if we didn't spend it.
Twenty-seven thousand, yeah.
So. Well, I, I would, I would suggest that if we're gonna look at that question, that Melissa probably do an analysis and look at what we have used of that and what we haven't. And, and if it's appropriate, put it back.
Okay.
I mean, as a select board member, I don't, I'm not sure that's my role here, other than be administrative in essence or managerial in essence, and, and ask the questions that need to be.
Right, she would know exactly the number.
And when it's appropriate, Dot, let me know, and I can ask the question of the other select board members here.
Go ahead.
Uh, the fourth item down, Highway Salt Shed Grant. There are a number of things regarding Wyndham Regional and our tran, our termination of the grant agreement that are going on in the background, that are not part of this budget. Uh, we had sent, uh, that one thousand eighty dollars that's here. Actually, that, uh, yeah, we had, we had sent that to Wyndham Regional. I don't know, given the fact that in the termination of this grant, we find ourselves in a position of, of returning to the state. And, yeah, I guess it's the state, all monies that have been expended. So if we're gonna end up doing that, I don't know if we need to include this amount as actual income, because we're gonna end up paying out, it out again, apparently within the next quarter.
This is a proposed, proposed budget of one thousand eighty dollars.
But it's income.
A proposed income.
And it's, it's actually a reimbursement for money that had been paid already, that hasn't been executed by Wyndham Regional, because I haven't signed off on it yet. But I'm anticipating we're going to. Because she's asked me to, she's asked me, as you may note in the emails that I sent today, she's asked me for an update on monies that we, uh, needed to pay. For her most recent activity for the last essentially three, four months of Wyndham Regional efforts on her part.
About five hundred dollars, right?
Yes, so in theory, uh, so we paid that, but it, I'm wondering if, if we want to get into the game of, or to find ourselves in a scenario of. We're gonna count some of it as income, but whenever the Secretary of Transportation of Vermont decides what we're gonna end up paying, we're gonna end up paying it back anyway. So we're showing it up on this expense, but we're dispersing it again within probably the next three, four, maybe five months.
So make that a zero?
I'm wondering if we should just zero that out?
I, I, I think that would be fine, I think we were probably doing a magic ball looking, you know, what, what could be worth. So I, I would zero, zero it out.
All right.
Okay.
Better question about the.
That's our anticipated revenue, since we don't know.
About the Wyndham Regional, the bill that we just got, was four hundred and sixty or four hundred and eighty dollars?
Four hundred and sixty-four, fifty-three, or something like that.
Hmm, good. That doesn't, obviously does not include anything that we did with Ron Bell or any of all, all that stuff.
It's already been paid.
Already been paid.
Well, no, that's, that's the final closeout, that's something that's gonna have to go out, the final closeout.
I don't follow.
We, we ask your question again.
The Wyndham Regional bill that we got today was Wyndham Regional, but has nothing to do with Ron Bell, and you said.
His final bill of eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars has changed.
That's his final bill?
That was his final amount, after what we've already paid.
After what we've already paid, which is how much?
Roughly nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five bucks.
So if we're into about eleven grand to roughly?
Yeah, yeah.
It's all in it then.
Yeah, so he's billed it, we haven't paid it yet.
The eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
And the four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
That's, that's for the work that we're obligated to pay through the grant contract when it was inception, and it's inception.
I understand.
Uh, for work that their representative from Wyndham Regional, in this case, Margot Gia.
Uh-huh.
Has done in terms of documenting the hours she spent complying to the requirements of the contract, et cetera, et cetera. So that's just Margot's amount, that, that four hundred and seven bucks.
Right, that's, okay. I'm good.
All right, I hope I took the shortest way to answer that.
You did, did for me.
All right, so.
But the bill was all, the total bill for Ron Bell was a lot less than we thought, it was supposed to be a lot more.
His, his estimate was for fifteen thousand three hundred dollars, that's for the whole project. And he required the ninety-eight seventy-five upfront as a good faith demonstration that we're into this.
Hmm.
And that was paid, it was paid, I spent time here today finding it, uh, and it was paid in late two twenty, two thousand twenty, early two thousand twenty-one.
So we just owe the eighteen hundred.
So we just are gonna end up having to owe him the eighteen hundred seventy-five, I think the number is.
And they'll be sending us a separate bill, or should we assume that?
We sent the bill to Wyndham Regional, Wyndham Regional sent a copy to us, and, and so I'm sitting tight. Till they give us the closeout numbers in firm, in firm terms. I can ask them, or call them, or email them tomorrow and say, uh, how do we go about continuing this closeout? Do you want that kind of money at this point, or do you wanna include it in the final adjusted number?
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, in one sense, that's a number that's gonna surface here, that was gonna have to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, it's an additional expense, it's a good thing you brought it up, thinking this through.
Yeah, so we'll see if they want us to pay the eighteen now, and then, but, or, or if they're gonna send us some, a total summary bill, I don't.
Yeah, cause we don't want that coming after.
Yeah, somewhere around here, there's a closeout summary number for the Sand Salt Shed that we were guesstimating that, and there was a discussion about. Yes, it was, and there's a. Yeah, so that, that eighteen hundred and seventy-five needs to be added to that number whenever we decide what that number should be.
But then we have to subtract the fifteen thousand we thought it was originally going to be.
Nope, no, cause that was part of the grant money that we didn't use.
That's the difference between.
Okay.
It was for the grant money that we did, we could have used, but we didn't use. So we, we're only paying and how to pay for what he has billed us for, except for that last eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I will clarify with them, and I apologize for not having done that for tonight, I, I should have thought of that, I just didn't think of it.
Well, I think that's fine, nevermind.
Okay.
All right, um.
And, and I wanna, and if I do that, if I, sorry to interrupt, if I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna send a copy to Chris Hunt, at the A O T. And, and would you mind if I asked him if he has a date and what, when we're gonna hear about this for a final?
Yeah, I would mind that, really.
Great.
I'm sorry, thank you.
That's fine, no, listen, gentlemen, you have all been very conscientious, and this is good, we're just going through the, uh, final review in here. Well, semi-final review, summer highway salaries, everything here has been set, uh, the salt sand shed expense line is open.
I think that's where we're gonna put that, that in there.
Uh, I just.
Or was there a grant expense?
I mean, um, pull my worksheet, hold on one second, make sure I have. I'm just gonna compare the one that we, okay, this is page three, all right, so, um. Okay, summer contracted services. Okay, thirty-six. Open for the Highway Salt Shed, uh, we've asked her to, to put the word FEMA, and she has for that on flood item. We've added thirty thousand dollars for contracted services there, uh, highway material stays at forty, that one thousand, and then the FEMA materials. Notice that we added forty thousand for that.
Yeah.
Under there, so that's something new, going down, um. Everything was.
That looks great, except for the kind of stuff that's related to FEMA.
Right.
My god.
Highway insurance, uh, we put in fifty-five hundred dollars based upon that most current information. Score, the permits, we added the extra hundred dollars for thirteen fifty, she's, she's updated that, um, the signs, everything.
Oh, can I comment?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, uh. Yesterday afternoon got a response, the fee will only be five hundred dollars, it won't be thirteen fifty. I spoke, I, I emailed the department under which that tiered fee was being assessed from the town. It clearly says on the tier census data, two thousand and ten, and we had a population less than five hundred. According to that, we were only gonna be required to pay a five hundred dollar fee for the annual fee for the M R G P program.
Right, but now.
But I, I was concerned, because twenty-twenty census says we now have five hundred and twenty people. And so I didn't wanna find that we pay them five hundred, and then three months say, oh, you owe us another three fifty. So I, I call, I email them and said, should we be paying the five hundred, or are we gonna be paying the thirteen fifty? The person initially took the information, had a real hard time dealing with it, her supervisor emailed me, uh, yesterday afternoon. And said, they're sticking with the five hundred dollars, so they're not gonna increase it because of twenty people, they're still gonna use the.
The.
Twenty-ten census, not the twenty-twenty census.
Wow, okay.
So it's, it's only five hundred dollars.
But if you go back to the previous years, we did spend, I don't, I'm just, hold on, let me go on with it again. All right, because in twenty-twenty-two was eleven forty, and then twenty.
I think that was because there was delinquencies of prior years, so those got, fees got paid, but it was for prior years, it hadn't been paid. So it ends up showing up as an expense for that year, cause one of the discussions or brief exchanges that Melissa and I had. Was that there's a two hundred and forty dollar fee for one of the applications, and then there's a.
Six hundred.
Six hundred and forty dollar fee.
Right.
But in an email that Melissa sent me, and if I'm not misunderstanding this, a couple of weeks ago, she says those are once every five year, or once every two or three year. Charges, and not the annual.
So, okay, so that thirteen fifty should be dropped.
Yeah.
And change to five hundred.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And next year, you're gonna see another number there, not the five hundred, because she's in the process, or just paid a week or two ago. The, the fees that we had assessed from years, a couple of years ago, and for the, the re, re-bought, revision or the restart of the new M R G P. Five-year term that we had to pay this pad here, so we remember that, a year from now, we'll, uh, we'll recall that that number is skewed again.
Okay. All right, Todd, Melissa, we got.
You remember it.
All right, everything.
No, it's depending on you.
You have a problem.
Anything else here was not changed, um.
Mark's got it all on his head.
Right, uh, we see, I mean, this final number, four-ten-three-seventy, is gonna change because of the drop in the, uh, uh, in the highway storm permitting.
Will drop.
It'll drop, but it will drop.
Okay.
Okay. Second.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, there was a couple of other things that, are any questions beyond what you have on these type of sheets?
No.
Okay. Um.
But, no.
Go ahead.
No.
That's budget details, um. Uh, if you see that's under five A, and five B is articles to be written up, and five C is administrative assistant position. There is a cost to an administrative assistant position. That, there is no line item here, are we going to guesstimate the number of hours an administrative assistant might work throughout the year? And guesstimate what hourly fee that part-time physician might be at this time, to put it in the budget?
Which is I hate, yeah, which is I hate increasing anything on the budget, yes. Yes, we can't go on like this, we, we just can't, if we, the select board doesn't get help. I don't wanna say the conclusion.
Yeah. I mean, I, I've been thinking about it, and I'm just. I'm just thinking that, you know, fifteen hours a month should be sufficient for someone.
Oh, this is your, this is your territory, you two know this better than I do, how much, how much time?
Right.
Let's put it this way. In administrative assist, um, assistant capacity. What could, what's the maximum that we could use that person for, I guess is what I'm saying, what are the things that that person would be used for? I, in that, in that capacity, so if you're normally talking fifteen hours, should it be really twenty, because we could be.
Fifteen hours a month.
Fifteen hours a month.
Oh.
Could it be really, no, she's, could it be really twenty, because we could really use this, this person for something else as well, if that's what I'm driving at. Otherwise, I'm guessing to maximum out what you need, don't minimize it.
Uh, road supervisor, he said not more than X number of hours. So we could budget for a maximum number of hours, it does not have to all be spent, um.
Based on X amount of dollars?
Right, based upon the number of hours you think, and the number of.
Well, if you took in twenty hours a month, times twenty dollars an hour roughly, you're dropping four hundred dollars one. Looking five thousand bucks in your forty hundred bucks.
How much?
Forty-eight hundred bucks, did I do my math right? I did it all real quick. The brain isn't that perfect these days, like, it's brain to night.
I know, uh, uh, what was it, Jamaica hired an administrative assistant, but they were pretty close to half time, right? Every day, five hours a day.
It'd be a lot easier to think twenty-five thousand dollars for that.
And I don't think we need to, to, to do that.
Aside, did Jamaica's like triple the size of it?
At least.
At least.
What does that number look like, uh?
That's forty-eight, forty-eight hundred dollars, twenty hours, twenty dollars an hour.
Right. Okay, I suggest it goes in there, I don't like it. You know what, I think about increasing anything on the budget, I get really pissy, but we can't, we gotta stop this. We can't, we can't, not do all this.
Do we need to get, uh, the permission of the council since to take on or create?
Not, not appointment.
Uh, we selected this issue, which is the reason why we wanna change the treasurer from elected to appointed.
Right.
But they have to approve the budget.
That's correct.
Forty-eight hundred dollars there, and it becomes an obstacle.
It could be part of a discussion, especially it could be put into the select board report that goes into the town.
Oh, I'm happy to.
So that, that, that would be part of that.
I'm happy, I'm ready for that.
Be a surprise kind of thing, I don't think that would be fair, you're correct.
In fact, my biggest problem with the. In fact, my biggest problem with the town meeting is keep the chip off my shoulder.
So where are we at right now in this discussion about that? You want more input from the other members on the board or? I would suggest we put it in the budget. If 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 at worst case scenario, we procrastinate or decide not to utilize it, it's at least there.
That's right.
I have a suspicion that at the outset, if we bring somebody on who's not been in that position in another town, that we're gonna do a lot of training and it's gonna it's gonna be heavy loaded at the beginning part of that role.
That's a good point.
And a lot of it, it will be from people sitting at this table and perhaps Mark.
Right.
Who might need to provide that person the basic knowledge
Right.
to perform the role that we're asking her to perform.
Right, it's gonna like, it's just gonna take a fair amount of time of explanation for sure.
Yeah.
And learning for a while, yeah, to come up to speed. Go ahead.
I think for uh I think we do need to consider writing up a draft description addition. Um but I do think that putting underneath planning commission expenses on the bottom of that page under town operating expenditures that four thousand eight hundred dollars.
And the town administrator?
As an administrative assistant.
Okay.
Okay. That would be the only, that, you know, other than having Melissa then redo this up, do all the numbers up, we will then have the next meeting.
Yes.
Hard numbers.
Yeah, and then we're voting, then we're approving it.
Yeah, ready to go and and do that.
We're good.
So you notifying Melissa over that.
Yes, I will write to Melissa about um I have a couple.
I'm not trying to push anything.
No, 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 that's fine. I've done that before.
And then go see auditors definitely.
I don't know, I think about the auditors. The auditors were supposed to work over at least uh Christmas break. I don't know if they did or didn't. Okay, I got no questions asked from the auditors, I know emails from them, but they they said they were gonna work during the Christmas.
They were gonna do this? No.
Our our proposed budget, no, we looked at how we spent the money the year before.
Okay.
If there were any discrepancies.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Ideally, in an ideal world, I would like to have a budget committee made up of two selectmen and two residents that would sit down like other towns do and work this all out. And then propose it to us. Ideally, that would be at some, you don't, you know, but we don't, we don't even have some people for it, so I don't know.
So anybody take the freaking number?
You know, somebody who's really good with numbers and wanted to sit in and assist on that, I mean, I can think of a couple of people right away that might be good to help to be residential uh people to get involved maybe going forward, that might be something, but in right now, um. Okay. We go to articles to be written up.
Sounds like the thing to do.
Okay.
Somewhere I have. So. And Stan, the again, I don't wanna overburden. Stan and I say we were gonna meet on Tuesday.
Let's just go ahead.
Right, and these are some of the things that we could also discuss when we have enough time to do it all one one day, but like article one in the previous morning was to elect all town officers required by law. So town moderator, town clerk, we wanna we have to uh uh and of course I didn't bring it with me tonight, but V L T C Vermont League of Cities and Towns has warnings for changing the
The town, the treasurer.
Treasurer to an appointed position and I I had a vote, but.
That's what I wanted to keep that chip off my jaw.
Delinquent tax collector, uh select board member, so, okay. My term is expiring this year. Your term is expiring this year. What was Gwen's and what was David's, we have to figure out what their terms were, what's left on them so that when we look to fill that, we we say that, you know, term A is a three-year term with two years left on it. Term B is a
Yeah, right, right.
It's a two-year term with one year left on it.
Right.
Term three, it's a three-year with three years. Yeah, so we have to that's something that needs to be done, select board terms. For the next meeting.
So there's three possible, there's three possible voting, three possible select people voting, yeah, that's all that, when I was looking.
Okay, okay, um.
Do you want an answer to those now?
You you know that?
Well, I've got the book.
Okay, go ahead.
She's in.
Uh David, David's expired in twenty twenty two. So.
He was on it.
So he.
Was he a three-year member?
He was a three-year term, so his role would be a three-year term.
Right.
With two years left.
With two years left.
Okay, right.
So a three-year with two left.
With two left. So if I get selected to that position, we'd have two left in that position.
Correct.
Because we wanna keep the synchronization.
And Gwen
We thought about that.
was uh elected to a three-year term and its its expiration was twenty twenty four. So two years left.
With two years left?
Yeah.
Gwen.
I.
Okay.
Wait.
And then.
This is twenty three. Expires to twenty four.
Twenty twenty three.
So, so one year, one year left, you're right.
One year. That's about twenty twenty five. So it's one more. What was it, three-year? Did she have, did she got elected to a three-year term? Or was it a two?
I don't know, I I don't know for sure.
What do you got there?
I'm sorry?
What do you got there for what, the second one?
Oh, you're looking at me.
Uh Gwen, Gwen, Gwen Danza was elected to a three-year term apparently back in twenty twenty one.
Oh.
So it it apparently expires in twenty twenty four.
So there's one year left.
One year left, a three-year term.
Yeah, and David is uh.
Two years left on the three-year term. Okay.
And you and I are straight three years.
No, I was a two-year term.
Oh, you were a two-year term?
I came in, yeah, two years ago after my two-year break. So there's a two-year term.
Well, you know, I'm not sure.
Two years left.
Uh, his term expired in twenty twenty two. So we're probably good.
Remember David?
Yeah.
Yeah, David did expire, he said it wasn't gonna be brought.
Yeah.
Right, so here's a three-year term, we did not fill, that's just three years left on it. There's a three-year.
Okay.
That with, Gwen did two years, there's one year left on it, the two-year is done, so it's a two-year left.
Yep.
Um and then there is Stan Noga, it was a one-year, so Stan, um.
You know.
Were you going, was that supposed to be a three? Was that a?
The terms are supposed to be staggered.
Right, but I believe that they decided not to have one-year terms.
Okay.
So you were appointed to fill the one year that Shelby Brimmer did not finish.
Right.
Right, and you got elected after that, right?
Yes.
And so you are in your three, you are
Two.
You are. This is your sec, you did a one-year appointment and then you were elected to a three-year term.
It wasn't a full-year appointment, but and then I ran for election. And I I I thought it was a two-year term that I ended up running for.
Okay.
Because there's, I think there's three, three-year terms that are staggered and two, two-year terms.
Good, oh, that's, that's good, good. That's what I, that's what I needed to hear, okay. So there's a two-year term. All right, so.
Just wanna make sure.
There's a two-year term that you were elected to expired in twenty twenty three. And the, and Mayan elected to a two-year term will now be twenty twenty four.
All right, so I guess I'm not.
Staggered. And you look at the ones above, the three-year terms, if you get the book, you'll notice they're staggered in their completion.
Yes.
And twenty twenty one, twenty four.
Right. All right, so that is.
Did you gotta write that?
I don't have it, I don't, did you have, I'm sure Stan has it written down right. I screwed us, screwed it up.
What, what do you want to know?
All right, what do we, so what do we have?
Why should words tick for us?
We have, we have a need, we have Da- David Jones, uh we we need, we need a selectman that would have a three-year term.
Two years left.
With two years left.
That's David Jones.
Yeah.
If you go write David Jones, that's gonna help you. There you go. What's the second one?
And then, and then the second one is, we have
Gwen?
One year left of a three-year term and that is replacing Gwen.
One year left of a three-year term.
Okay.
That's Gwen.
Yes.
Okay, and then Stan?
And uh and I'm not, I'm not, uh apparently, uh my term expires uh in twenty twenty three?
No.
Twenty three, twenty four.
Twenty four.
So it'll be next year, yes, twenty twenty four.
This is twenty two.
Okay, so and I'm not quitting yet, so.
Three-year term.
Mayan was a two-year term. Right, twenty three.
Write down, write down Stan, so you can remember.
Stan, two-year.
But but there's no need to vote on that, because it's basically.
Right, okay. Go ahead.
Those are the only two that need to be voted on.
Bruce had a.
For for.
No, yeah.
Yours expires. Mine's expired too.
And that's.
Your, your, your three-year term.
Yeah, yeah.
Mine's three-year.
So we need to vote four positions open. A three-year term with two years left.
Yeah.
A three-year term with one year left.
Yeah.
A three-year term and a two-year term.
Thank you. Which one was the Gwen one?
She is a three-year term with one year left.
That's the second year when she quit.
Supposed to be in twenty twenty four, her term was supposed to expire, but it's next.
Next, next March. Okay.
All right, so now I I we have that, because we we'll have to put that into, type that.
So yours was a two-year term, so yours would expire in twenty twenty five coming up, right?
No.
No, this year.
Twenty three.
I'm two years lower, that's.
Right, yeah, right. So if the person running for that position runs, it's a two-year term, so they would, they would uh.
Twenty twenty four, twenty four, twenty five.
Twenty five, right, okay, it's a two-year term.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so we we can see that in select term, because that new is a problem. Listers, um.
And Bruce, Bruce is expiring, it's a three-year term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amazing.
So we could, you could not be nominated for a two-year term.
I could do it.
Maybe twenty twenty five, yeah. And I hope you do.
I hope, we'll see how that's, what could happen to us. Anyway.
Since we are, have been appointing listers, we haven't had them in terms. But a lister for a term of three years, a lister for a term of two years, it says a remainder of an open three-year term. See? Here's the listers again as well.
Well, I suppose it has to be in the town report.
Yeah.
And since would be, would we want to start by looking for a lister for one year and another one for two years and another one for three years, so we have elected people on a staggered basis?
Well, I mean.
And and if, and if, you know, we get none. I don't know, do we need to, we, do we need to make a uh an article to appoint?
No, you don't need to, if nobody runs, then we do the appointment.
Okay, okay. So we're, we're, we're focused, we have to at least go to
Say that.
On the floor, a nomination for one-year seat, a nomination for two-year.
Except we're trying to change treasurers to an appointed.
Right, right. So the what is in here from the town report of last year regarding listers, text of that can simply stay the same, except we can lop off remainder of an open three-year term.
Yes.
On both, the two and the one year, correct?
That sounds correct.
Yeah, I guess, well. They're all three-year terms. Listers, but they.
Well, well, these were known.
Selectmen.
This is, this is showing that there was a three-year term. There was, and and then there was a two-year term with a remainder of of an open three-year term.
They're all three years.
But doesn't it specify what that remaining term was? Listener for, unless they're saying that the two-year term, maybe you were right, maybe it was a three-year term for all of them.
Yeah, they are, it says listener for a term of three years.
I'm sorry, I misinterpreted that.
Remainder of an open three-year term, remainder of an open three-year term, so they're all three-year term.
Or three-year terms, well, you're right, I'm sorry.
So we have a lister a three-year lister with two years remaining, a three-year lister with one year remaining and a three-year lister with, for three years, because this lister for a term of one year remaining expires this year. So we need three listers.
So what was stated last year is the same for this year.
In a way.
Yes, so we we can leave that terminology as far as wherever that word is in the word processor, just leave it as it is.
Okay, well, I think so. Half the thinking about stabbing you. But all right, perfect. All right, auditor for a term of three years, who is up for auditor? Frank's not re-elected by Australian ballot, um Henry Brooks. So it's.
He gets, he gets one that expires.
No, he he was re-elected.
He was, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you did say that.
Mm-hmm.
For three year, you said?
Um. Um, it's, I may not have it here, but it is written down, um.
I can look, uh the minutes, the minutes of lectures are somewhere in Guy's files.
Yes, and eh, well, yes.
Okay, so we'll need to just double check those.
So we need one, one auditor for a three-year term. One auditor. Yep, so that stays the same.
Okay.
Uh cemetery commissioner, we need a new cemetery commissioner, um Cynthia Now has passed away. Uh Michael got re-elected. Oh, I'm not running again, cemetery commissioner.
Okay.
So they're gonna need to get a cemetery commissioner. And.
Uh Cynthia.
Cynthia Now. She she has, um she has two years remaining on her three-year, on her five-year term.
Who's the chair of that group?
Cynthia Now.
Oh, she was the chair as well.
Yes.
Okay, was there a vice chair?
I did notes.
I did notes.
Yeah, that's all I guess. I tried to move them along, but it's impossible. I'll say with the community, you can't work with.
Mike and Howard and Sam Williams, Sam and a group, what, or Joe Paulman? Oh, my, oh, my camera.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so uh cemetery commissioners is is one, uh two cemetery commissioners, one five-year term and two out of a five-year term. And one five-year and two of five years left, okay. Um trustee of public funds, one-year term, that's
That's.
That's.
God, yeah.
No, it was Melissa.
Was who?
Melissa.
Oh, okay.
Trustee of public funds for a term of one year. We appointed her. Doesn't have to be an elected person, have to be in, be uh a member of the referring community. So we have to do a little research on the public funds. Have to do a little research on that.
That could be an issue, maybe. Whether we have to make that an appointed position? It's a loaded position.
Guy was not, did not run for that position.
Uh, if he did, he 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 jumped it and re-quit all the positions.
Okay, all right.
And then we had to, we put Melissa, we, if we go back to her minutes, we appointed Melissa, the delinquent tax collector of this, that, yeah. We did the appointments when the position was vacated.
Thank you.
But I will have to check on Vermont League of Cities and Towns for this as to this, that morning, okay. Um I'm just moving quickly, you can straightforward. Article two is the audio report, article three would be the tax numbers.
No.
Article four are the dates for the installments, article.
Oh, wait, that there. We're gonna make sure they're accurate, we got to a tizzy pick. Remember that happened?
Yes.
So we have to make sure they're right on.
Right.
When we get to all, another hour discussion order.
Articles, uh, five.
It's a half an hour. Really?
All these other simple articles will be part of the appropriations, we, we're gonna set that up a little bit differently.
Uh-huh.
Um, appropriations of the, uh, recycling fees, uh, we're not doing up to its utilization this year, um.
Is, is staying with the twenty-two thousand dollar number for recycling?
No, we went to, no, it went to, if you look on here, we went down to eighteen, it's eighteen thousand.
Okay, so we, that's just.
Um, and this is something that I, you know, Stan, once we, we work, we can break this out into, I'll type this, you type that, and then we, you know, so that nobody's doing all of the same stuff.
Sounds good.
Like you said, so we're not being duplicated, you know, and then you, then you can, let's just say, I don't like the way you think.
I'm not yelling, I don't even.
All right, so that's the.
People do my job for me.
That's the, um, warning.
Well, no, no, don't we have to, shall, shall the town approve, or whatever the term might be, the change of the select board, of, of the, uh, treasurer, I don't know if you want to include tax collect, whoever, being an appointed, from an elected to an appointed position?
Yes, I did do a little research, and I have it in a folder, and I didn't bring it with me, but there is some word.
So that would be in Article thirty-two, and that's.
Something like that, yes. It would be part of Article.
Because it is required that the citizens vote that, get that change.
Change.
Yes, so they have to vote that change before Article one will have to be the change, and then Article two would be the required by law, because if they don't vote for the change, I'm not sure how, where it would be placed. I would place it last.
Is that something we're gonna talk about on Tuesday?
Why is it just being there with the with all the rest of the going on, select board and all the rest of it, we're just gonna make it on the bottom, maybe?
Well, you know, she's, she's got a very good point here. We're making a variation.
I know.
From having all our officers elected to, to this situation, where we're asking for the permission of the citizens to appoint a treasurer, and whatever else we need to, to work with on that. That would almost seem, you wanna do it right off the bat? And then Article two would become to elect all the other officers required by law.
And if Article one fails, then someone's gonna vote, someone's gonna run for that position from town, and they can.
Yeah, they can.
Mm-hmm, and with, again, through the, um,
If it's voted down.
Select board letter in the town report, and maybe some emails through Julie, people can be, be made more aware of this before the the meeting, the vote.
So I think you're, having, having that one's thing number one.
I think so.
Makes a lot of sense.
Well, from a bull riding a fire first thing, aren't we?
But, you know, get it overdone.
Hey.
And you're on easy street after.
I'm, I'm into that fight, so I'll put both my chips on, beat each other's shoulder, I'm ready to go.
All right, so Article two.
They're not giving us time.
Appointment versus election.
Yeah.
And Article two would be the elected, uh, Article three would be auditors, Article four would be taxes, and then appropriations.
And then that's it.
All right, and, um.
Yes.
Right?
You know. All right.
So this will be on the agenda again very briefly for next week, we should have, uh, next, next, uh, week. Yeah, very good. You wanna, um, share, I didn't bring it with me, um, you spoke with David via email, and he has a schedule that he would like
Yeah, so.
those reports in.
January thirtieth or something.
Okay, so it's, so we have time in January to do what, what we need to do before we send it to him, correct?
We're all done, we're all done on the eighth.
Yes, uh, well, that's, unfortunately, yes and no.
Yeah, what's his schedule?
He, he indicates that by January twenty-seven, all electronic content he submitted to him.
Okay, so he can.
And then on January thirtieth, which is.
Three days later, on Monday.
A Monday.
And we.
He will have a PDF proof, which is, sounds like he's working on the weekend.
Yes, for.
To use as the, uh, the report. And then he wants us to communicate back to him the two days later.
Yeah.
Which would be February.
February second, February first, thirty-one days in February.
Right.
Then on February third, he says he'll send the final print files to the printer. And then on the, uh, February twentieth, he will have the reports sent to the town via first-class mail.
And we're on time.
And so we're well within time.
Okay.
When you look at the other email that I sent booking at timeframes, uh,
March seventh is your town meeting.
The, what we have to keep aware of for our own selves is that, uh, the twenty-sixth of February, the town warning has to be posted.
Okay.
And it must be placed in two public places, and a place in or near the, the town clerk's office.
Okay, on here.
And it has to be, in addition, placed on the town website.
Yes.
And we're starting places, and, and, and here, okay.
At the twenty-sixth.
So if.
On the twenty-sixth.
All right, so let's talk about the content, and you saw the electronic content. We do not, we have been receiving lots of information from appropriations people, saying, this is for your town report, this is for your town re- town. But we don't put them in.
No.
I am going to ask our assistant treasurer, assistant town clerk to organize the appropriation.
I'm sorry, no, can I interrupt? I need to make a correction, I said two twenty-six. That is actually one twenty-six.
What?
I believe it's one twenty-six.
It has to be posted by one twenty-six.
Yeah.
January twenty-sixth, the town.
I'll double-check it, but I believe that's the date.
The town, the town warning for when the, when the, uh, when the town meeting is?
This is the warning.
That, that has to be.
Absolutely.
Posted on the twenty-sixth of January. How do we do that?
No, we, well, we print it out, it's not gonna, it's the same thing's gonna be in the book.
Yeah, it's not a book.
But it's gonna need to be ready on the twenty-sixth, because, because, uh, on twenty-seven, David says we need all of this to him.
Right.
So that, we're not really doing anything, covering for any of the smooth flow of the word.
Right.
I, in copying this, I dictated this, 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 you know, with the, the dates I dictated, and apparently my finger went from the one key to the two key. So it's one twenty-six, and that's two.
Okay.
Well, we have a meeting on the eighteenth, and so we can make sure all our ducks are in a row, and have a PDF ready to go on the website, and go on our, our bulletin boards that following week. And then David will work on the rest of, what other reports, what are the electronic things that he needs? He needs the warning.
Oh, gosh, yes.
All the elected, all, th- these pages.
I would assume he needs the inside of the cover, for the contents and all that sort of thing.
Auditors, we only asked for an auditor's report, and we asked, well, the, the, this, the budget stuff is easy enough for.
Town meeting units.
Me, and the select one report, vital rec, so we have to ask Guy for s- some things. We have to ask Guy for do- dog ordinances, he does this. He does the vital records. Um, I will do a select order report, but since there are only three of us, we'd, 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 we'd select them would like to do an individual report, I would be glad to see, I can write stuff, you can have something from Bruce, you can have something from Stan, would you like to consider that?
I'd be willing to chip in any way possible.
I could chip in, you know, the statement.
Okay.
Uh, by, would you need it by? The twenty-sixth?
Well, no, that's when it's typed and done and edited.
Yeah, so it's needed long before that.
Yeah, we would like it, um, before the sixteen, before the next meeting, that Monday.
Why by the next meeting, is interesting.
Well, the next meeting's the eighteen, so, yeah, I think if we work on this, having it by the sixteenth, that would be good, because then it would give us a chance to all review it on the next meeting.
Right.
Okay, so I have it done by the sixteenth. Have it done so it's, so that you could review it.
Right.
So it could, it could Microsoft Word, it's like, send it to you, okay?
And, and Bruce.
Just do it on email.
January sixteen. Okay.
And send to other select board members?
Yes.
Or review.
Melissa will do these other pages, and, and, and. All right, so all these middle pages are what was done, um, so the voting. I think what got confusing to some people, um, when they wrote in names for people who were, yeah, never mind. Just need the auditor's report. Needs that by January. Should we ask the auditors to have their reported by the sixteen?
I would say yes. Frankly.
Okay. And we'll, we'll, we'll plug away at this other stuff, it's between now and then. It's, some of it's, it's just repetitious, but.
Yeah, okay.
All right, good.
I would hope that, since David did it apparently by himself last year, that
He did.
Those things that we, uh, send to him, we put them in an order, so that when he's there, he's, okay, the first one, put it in where he's still after.
Most of them with us.
Yes, and, 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 and facilitate his job for him by being helpful and ordering it.
Yes.
But, y- you know, we'll do the best we can, I'm sure.
Right, all right, um.
I find this interesting, because, you know, we're, we're looking at having this on the sixteenth of January, but when you look at state, state rules, the auditors, on the thirty-first of January is their last day to post a ten-day notice of their meaning to examine town records. And then, and then, on the twenty-fifth of February, it's their last day to put to town meeting, publish the annual auditors report, or available otherwise to avoid, or do something different than that, to avoid publishing, so it, it kind of looks like this isn't gonna be a strain on them, to ask them to have it for a, a, a summary of their activity, or years' activity, and their opinion by the sixteen, I guess that's what I'm leading up to.
It's a fairly straightforward, consistent, year-to-year thing for.
I was making an observation.
Yeah.
For, for us, our physical purposes, we need to have it by the sixteen, but apparently, according to CLCT's timelines, they've got till, you know, much later.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah, the end of February.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the end of, uh, the end, yeah, the end of February.
Almost in, probably.
I said, I, having that sixteen is good, because I need to have that in front of me to
Yeah.
get it done, yeah. All right, so those make, I feel much comf- more comfortable now, town meeting review, and second, uh.
Yeah, there's a lot that we talked about today.
I'm gonna move this next item here quickly, I did send a copy of this to everyone a few weeks ago, when, when we came back from the meeting. And I'm gonna make the following motion. All right, uh, let me just, I'll start off with this, uh, summary. Uh, I'm gonna be referring to a BRIC twenty-twenty grant, which must have been done with, when David Jones was chair. It stands for Vermont Emergency Management, it says here, the purpose of this email is to confirm that the Vermont Emergency Management, BEM, has awarded the town of Brookline a sub-grant under the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities twenty-twenty. That's BRIC, Building, eh, eh, Resilient Infrastructure and Communities. Um, they have sent, and I sent it all, the copies to everybody here, it's another FEMA program, it is the grant. It, this program, the hazardous emergency management hazard grant, is because we had this done, that's why FEMA is helping us pay for some of the fees for the storm from August of, of July twenty-twenty-one, okay? We need to have it done, and it's a complicated process, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five match. Okay, it says, uh, authorized representatives needs to review initial and sign the agreement, as well as sign the AMP. One sign, you can email the signature pages back, and then they'll circulate the agreement. Uh, it is that survey that was done, the Department of Public Safety survey, that we all came in that one day. Okay, and we got our unique identifying number in. Uh, one of the things with this grant, before I make my motion, is to understand, it goes on to say that the town's twenty-five percent match can be clearly erased if selectmen or town officers choose to work on the plan with the Regional Planning Commission on a salary basis. And therefore FEMA does not have, ther- therefore, we would get paid, and we wouldn't have to pay FEMA to do the work. So, I would like to make a motion that you, that I, that, um, how am I now, or this? I would like to make a motion to give permission for me to do the initialing of the grant in the appropriate places, and submit it after a review with one other select board member.
So.
So moved by Bruce. The discussion quiet. Stan, I would like, if not this Tuesday, but another day next week, sit down and just look through this grant. It's, and make sure that I understand, and you understand what it is, we have all the paperwork here. Piesment, that would have to go in the newspaper for hiring the Regional Planning Commission, they would like to, they would like to handle this project, but it has to be put into the newspaper. So I have the template for the request for proposal, I got that back earlier in November, uh, it's the Hazard Management Funding, um, you know, eh, the award letter is dated twelve twenty-two twenty-one. And, um, has the award summary, you, had we printed all out, I'm hoping you have.
I, I did not print it out, but in, in, an attempt. I'm completely prepared for this evening. I started reading the four files that came
Yes.
from you, and, uh, they all, most of them appear to be substantial in size. I got as far as page fourteen on a thirty-seven page
Yes.
file, which was apparently the basic overview.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I, I didn't get far enough in it to get a clear handle on what it, uh, uh, requires. Uh, I guess we need to, you, you said in your email to us, you'd like to deal with it sooner than later, I agree with that. Uh, it sounds like the person that's gonna review our application, if we submit what it is that you're asking to, to have authority to do, uh, it's, it's that we need to do the project three, within three years from him signing off on it, sending it back, if I understand that correctly. But I guess, before we get into a lot of different paperwork, which is, it sounds being FEMA is a lot, what program it is we have in mind to utilize that for? Uh, because we, in theory, I guess, have up to three hundred thousand dollars, uh, of which, it's a seventy-twenty match, and in certain circumstances, it'll go to a, a ninety-ten match. So, and there is ability to utilize that match by town employees working, uh, and that being our match equivalent, based on how it was worked by.
By that, right, right.
So, so I guess, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying, it, it looks pretty, pretty. So so I guess I'm looking at it and I'm saying it it looks pretty pretty convoluted in terms of
County.
The requirements. There's a lot of federal regulations that I have not yet read that it's referencing. Not that I need to understand every detail, but as I was sitting there, I'm saying, yeah, I'd love to do the best I can for the town of Brookline. If there's something that's in need of being done for flood prevention, I think we should work out that and go forward. My next question is the highway people, Mark, uh Archie, you dealing with this flood, is there a project that you have in mind that we can accomplish in the next three years with three hundred thousand dollars?
This is what Wyndham Regional will work with, will develop, is the plan for the town based upon best practices and based upon how, where we, where the town is now. It's a, it's a forward thinking project.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think it's, we're already in a best practices with AOT's best roads practices with grants and aid to bring our roads up to the standards like we are in the MRGP program. I perceive this to be oriented toward infrastructure as a prevention for flood.
Correct.
Based on past experience.
Correct.
So so it's, I don't perceive it as simply being best roads practice, but and I mean, I mean over focus on that. But I'm beginning, I I just want to make sure that I don't get myself into something, given our limited numbers, where we're working, 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 and and not for something that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
That's my fear.
That's why they on selectmen run the program that you hire out professionals to run the program.
They're administrative only, I'm sure they're gonna come back to us and say, is this what you need? I mean, they're not gonna make our decision as to what we need. And there's nothing to me that seems obvious. And I would look at saying with my lack of knowledge to Mark or Archie and say, what do you think we need to do? What is it that's a project out there that's flood related? That is a recurring issue over the years that we need to deal with in terms of this grant? We've already, I've already seen how it's administered based on our sand and salt chat. And there's, there's great things and there's not great things. And and so, you know, I guess having had that exposure, I I just, you know, want to make sure that we have a need for, number one, before we get into uh all the other things that go along with getting, uh came from somebody and then we're under a three year time limit and 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 I don't mind the three years. Somebody will do it if we're not all here, but the question becomes, what what is it that we want to accomplish? You know, we're getting ourselves into something, and I don't mind doing that if it's necessary and important. And I would hope that we would look at what it is that's important and necessary for the Brookline to have.
That's why I mailed it out and I know that I need somebody else to bounce this with because it is very complicated. And if the grant has been awarded to the town of Brookline, ready.
We have to respond.
And this is for infrastructure, yes.
Because I know there's a list in the state for infrastructures that need replacing in your town. They're on the list. But we don't get assistance until they tell us. This might, this is being a grant. Uh are we supposed to have a certain amount of money budgeted to? So when we do.
Over into a match situation, initially twenty five percent of, if it's a three hundred thousand dollar project.
Like say with a a bridge, the state uh would tell us which bridge. I mean, there is a list, we have some more blocks, over it's going through our class two roads that need replacing when we win the uh infrastructure grant monies, the matching grant monies. And I don't know how far down the road that is, but um.
That's a question I think that I I need to to learn, if if I can, either calling these people and or before we meet next Tuesday, read these four documents and find out what their interpretation of corrective or preventative action is.
Hmm.
I I if there's money available and we've already got, but my understanding is that this doesn't pick in until we send this back.
They've been waiting a year for it.
Yeah.
And this was something that I did not apply for.
I know.
I guess it was applied for and awarded and and inherited, and so um but from what I did read is if you do not develop your hazard, your mitigation plan, if you have a catastrophe, it your, the government's not gonna help you. So I I agree, but I was.
Well, we have a hazard plan already.
Not the same.
Well, it's a, it's a hazard mitigation plan, when I believe that FEMA is, I mean, it's not like nuclear material, it's also floods, I think. I believe it also deals with floods. And we need to have that.
So they've been asking and waiting for this and I can't put them off and I really don't want to put them off any longer. Um so other than waiting another two weeks, but I do think that between now and the next select board meeting, you and I need to sit down and rip this apart and make some phone calls and get an understanding. Because if we're going to refuse another grant, then we might, that may not be the best thing for the town. Uh that's why we look for administrative assistance, that's why we would do an RFP to a planning commission to to run this program.
I I don't want to stand in the way of anything that can benefit the town. I'm willing to do my part, but is, and I don't want someone to come complaining. But I'm, as you are, doing a lot already. And and uh we already crossed the bridge of whether we're gonna put ourselves in a good light or bad light by terminating the sand and salt chat in terms of agencies.
Mm hmm.
Uh so I frankly don't feel that I want to put myself under the gun to do the other things I'm gonna be doing here in addition to that by next Tuesday. I'm gonna ask you to hold off on that until February, if you would.
Okay.
We can talk about it this coming week. There may be more questions after we talk, they need to be isolated and.
That would be fabulous.
I mean, we've gone this far, waiting, it's not been a point that we haven't done it already.
Okay.
So waiting another two weeks or four weeks rather to come to a decision that I feel is appropriate and apparent, and I feel necessary. I know what I'm feeling like right now.
Yeah, I I just, I personally don't feel confident in in just signing my name on it, I was. So that's why I made the motion that that the board approved, but I am going to strike that motion.
Okay.
And put it on the agenda for I'm gonna throw it on the next meeting, but then we can table it if we have to, okay?
Sounds fair. I would think that Megan from.
But they won't help. People from Wyndham Regional cannot advise us or give us any advice because they would like the job. So they, I've already tried to reach out to them, she says, I can't advise you because when I'm gonna apply for it. That's the thing.
Let's become the parents, they 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 need income. And it's an income, only for them to survive, they need good money. And if they do the jobs for free, they don't get any money.
Right, I was just gonna say that Megan from Department of Transportation maybe would shed some light on answering some questions about that.
AOT, okay, that's different, she's not Margot, I was thinking Margot.
No, this is separate.
Yeah, AOT.
It's a good idea. Mark Pickering or Megan would be two people that could probably give you some good answers.
Alright. Yeah, because this, like I said, it's it's the, you know, I have the award summary, the agreement articles, the obligating documents, the funding of opportunities, and have the RFP for putting the ad out in the newspaper um program description, it's a lot, it's a lot, it's just, here, read this kind of thing. So yes, alright, I will put it on the agenda for the eighteenth, and in the meanwhile, we'll touch base, Stan and I um able to January eighteen going forward. Okay. I'm comfortable with that, thank you. New business, our recording clerk vacancy. Stan, you already said that you would uh try to do the recording, be the recording clerk. Um it is something that we can also put out. I mean, I just might, I don't know.
And we can, we can, we can ask, you know, at, well, I guess at our organizational meeting. Maybe make it known on the kind of date of the meeting, or put it in as a position to be not appointed or elected or reporting secretary appointed.
That's appointed.
Is anyone interested in being appointed as reporting secretary for the select board?
You're comfortable doing, but I do think you should, you should pick up the stipend.
Oh, yeah.
For the, for the daily, for the, for the reporting. It's that's a budget, you're gonna do the work you need to, I'm sorry.
So I I I would, I would rather not, the the frankly, I I I'm doing what I'm doing already to help
Okay.
the citizens. I I don't feel any, I don't wanna, I don't wanna burden anybody with another stipend and uh so I I would, I would not, would not be in approval, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that.
Well, I appreciate you offering to do it in the meanwhile, is it okay then if I put it, put it out through Judy right now that we are economy looking for?
I would say go for it, yeah. Definitely.
Not Judy, um Julie.
Julie, yeah.
Okay, um we're gonna table the next item because it was the back TV videographer versus the OWL, OWL camera system, um but but what's his name, Alex?
Hmm.
You're gonna ask him about that.
Yeah, I'm meeting with him on uh Tuesday, actually, so I can ask him that and yeah.
Alright, very nice.
Ask him the question about how long it takes for the videos to reach the website.
Yeah, yeah, because when I shut that off last week, it it was telling me it needed to do something and I I I panicked and then I thought, you know, I've been here long enough, two, two and a half, three hours or whatever it was, I just shut it down. Yeah.
Really?
So I didn't want to screw anything up, and it sounded like what you're saying is, right now, as it's recording, it's already going to the station. Correct, okay, so I didn't ruin anything.
Alright, the next item is summaries, updates, and reports, Mr. Bills, highways supervisor, what can you share with us this week?
Hey, so since our last meeting, uh we had, we had rains, warm temperatures, which brought the groundwater cable up. Uh roadside field flooding uh came up and went down with no uh severe damage, the only severe issue was on Hill Road, uh on Murdoch Road, it's a private, a culvert flood uh hundred yards up in and sent to broke down and causing debris to come on the surface of uh Hill Road. And I took the grader over and cleaned the the road up and put the road back. And um the only other issue went down uh was Putney Mountain Road, and I've got road closure signage up that states uh know, through traffic, road closed and that's about it.
Okay.
Just leaving the name, right?
We're good. Mr. Noga?
Yes, uh I, before the end of the year, I think it was three days before the end of the year, I sent the close up documents for the uh grant and aid project on Hill Road. Uh I think it's sixty seven hundred dollars we're gonna get. Uh I asked them to acknowledge, receive it, and let me know if there's anything further that I didn't include in it that they needed. I was very thorough, I included everything. She said initially, uh uh she she acknowledged, received it, said it seems to look fine. If there's any issues, she'll get back to me, but I can guarantee you there's not gonna be, it was, I did it complete, I took a long time to do it. So uh that's done. In the process of doing that, though, I had to uh watch a video that was uh prepared by the MRGP department uh in Roseland. Uh I watched the video on the update, the new program as it's happening from twenty twenty three on. And uh so there's a a couple of things that I would throw out uh for you to do, I I had not, I I'm gonna um I I I guess what I want to say is I did close it out, we should get our money hopefully within sixty days, but I can't guarantee that, I don't know if they're scheduled this. Uh next thing I learned is that uh we no longer have to depend on Wyndham Regional to do any of our uh grants and aid or MRGP uh initial site scope. Matter of fact, uh they don't even require photos of the road segment that you're working on before you do the repairs. And they're also allowing the towns to do the initial scope themselves without Wyndham Regional's uh involvement. If you can, so so it can be done that way. You can hire Wyndham Regional to do some prep, as I had mentioned earlier in, well, last year now,
Mm hmm.
that I was finding it difficult to keep pace with everything and suggested that we uh pay Wyndham Regional twelve hundred to fifteen hundred for them to do it. I did send it along, Wyndham Regional never acknowledged, received it. I don't know if that has anything to do with the fact that uh we terminated the highway, the garage or not. But in light of the fact that as a part of closing out the Hill Road project, I had to provide them with a copy of the original uh at uh scope of work document, and it's a piece of cake. It's anything that anyone here looking at the other one can complete. So I'm thinking if we, if we do it ourselves completely, or if we do ourselves and contact one of the three people that they recommend at the AOT, that we can get it done ourselves without having to wait for anybody else to show up. We no longer need those pictures. Uh and and that we simply try to do it ourselves and save the twelve or fifteen hundred dollar expense uh to save those people some money. Uh so it's a thought you can think of, but you know, about this, doing it ourselves or not, I'm not looking for any kind of response today.
Mm hmm.
I'll be happy to show Mark what I did to close it out, so he can get feeling comfortable with it if you'd like. I don't know what kinds of projects we got on your your job description. Uh but possibly help the select board in terms of going over the scope and being able to complete that yourself, so I I looking to spread the word a little bit at the same time and save money by doing that.
Right.
That wasn't greatly organized, but uh uh I uh I think that's a A okay, and and I believe we could finish or file the original scope and site work for the grant that we have, the twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant that's coming up for the next
Cycle.
This cycle coming up through the next, this coming spring, summer, and fall. Uh so whenever, if if you all think it's okay to do it, or agree to do it, uh I can show you the document if you'd like it, or email it to you between now and the next meeting, if you'd like, just to, just to uh again, save money, save time, and make ourselves self dependent.
And you're, I'm sure you're keeping files so that
I am.
historically, like this brick grant hit me from out of nowhere, but I didn't know, I didn't know about it, really, so yes.
I've got all those documents on my computer, I've got all the close up file on my computer. I've also got the close up file printed, it's just a matter of me, I didn't have time to do it this afternoon because of what I was looking up downstairs. So everything that I've done, the, you were kind enough to provide a copy of the lease, that's not, that isn't filed in Android yet, but it will be uh by 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 Friday's close.
Presently.
So everything that I have, the signatures on all the contracts, et cetera, everything will be done by, it's Friday. I've had it on computer already, but I I just want to find, make sure that I've not left anything out. So I guess that's, that's my status. There is one thing that you probably got an email from a guy, it's the annual mileage report?
Yes, I printed that out.
Okay, so did I. I went over, just for your info, I went over the uh roadmap for the town of Brookline. The current report certificate is accurate. So anytime that the select board wants to check the box that for for section number three and sign an initial, feel free to do that. I would like a copy, if you'd like.
Or should we put it?
I actually made a copy of the map, if any of you want to go look at it just in your own eyes, if you don't trust me, if you want to look for yourself, there's the map, the sun, it's a little fine print, but uh everything is accurate, so you, the only thing we need to do, if you're willing to, is for the section three down at the bottom of the page, where it says, if there are no changes in mileage, place an X in the box and sign below. And that's, that's all it. Place an X in the box and sign below, and that's, that's all it requires.
All right.
And the town clerk has to sign it as well. And then I believe it looks like the town clerk files it.
Yes. All right, so let's pass it around, take a look at it, check it and sign it.
I didn't write anything in it, same, this is one of your, I'm just examining, I've got another copy of it. Uh, I believe it would be the town chair, the clerk that would. Well, I think it says signatures of selectmen, aldermen or trustees. I think we probably all three need to sign.
I would think so.
So.
Sign it?
Yeah.
Does that list each road?
Well, if, if you. The, my map does. The map that I brought with me does. Absolutely, absolutely. I didn't bring a magnifying glass. Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
It does have a classification program for mileage.
You'll notice little columns on the left side of that, and you'll note that one of them, yes, one of them, one of them. Little's, little's right. One of them is, uh, Merrill Drive.
Okay.
I think it's point one nine or point one three miles and it's, it's listed there, they have highway number, highway number, highway number. And Merrill Drive has a particular number, and I double-checked it against the paperwork that was filed when. We took on, when I was on the select board at the time, Merrill Drive, and we took away three or four.
Yes.
So, so all the numbers stack up and line up with what we, what we ran down.
And I will put an X in the box.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And because we're filling this in, I, I, this will help assure that we get the, the forty one thousand dollars and. Grant a state highway aid.
Yes, that's, yes.
So I will, I will make a copy of this now, I guess, for each of us if Laura wants it.
Hey, can I get a copy of the map?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, uh, and then I'll, I'll come down and give it to Guy tomorrow. For, uh, his filing. Do we date this? Uh, he's gotta sign the date that he files.
Almost done, very quick.
Mark, even if this is hard to read, if you'd like, when I get home tomorrow, I can make it larger on my screen and do a print screen. And email that to you, sure, that'd be better?
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
No, I'm awesome.
Thank you so much, all right. Hey, um. Looking out, Sam?
I'm done.
Okay, uh, Bruce, building commissioner?
To work Mark's butt off. And I'll back into it, this is the end of it, which is to, uh, do some buttoning up in this building down in the basement. Most of it's just stuff that we would like to do over at, at the school. Right now, we're waiting for the opportune time to burn that burn pile and clean up the backyard up there, cuz it's just an ideal time. Ideal time of the year to get that done, it'll be done on the weekend, and then we'll probably move forward to do that, uh. Uh, above the, the, uh, closing up the, of the room above the, uh, preschool room that we, that I've been talking about for weeks. Um, we've also been taking, keeping a pretty good eye on things in that place, that's. How things are performing and they're really happy with the meeting, um. And I haven't gotten any complaints about the bills lately, just okay, but keeping an eye on the basement. Uh, we still have an issue with that pneumonia hole staying open, but it doesn't seem to be affecting anything right at this point. And we haven't had any serious weather, um, but there has, that's pretty much all of it. Um, other than regular maintenance, most of all this, Mark's gonna be doing, uh, I'll assist him a little bit on the burning. But behind the, uh, behind the building, but situated beautifully, cuz it's right next to the river and it's away from the building. So we're gonna torch a cleanup, clean up the mess, everything cleaned out of there and then move forward to the inside and do the, uh, do the. Preschool room, uh, above there where the, um, where the air handler is, uh, and that regular maintenance. That's pretty much it, and hopefully that, well, when that's all done, then we, we can start thinking about looking at that list. That we all went over about around school now sometime in March, who knows, we'll see how it all pans out. And then we gotta start considering, um, what we were talking about in terms of, um. Uh, memorial garden for Cynthia.
Oh, wonderful, thank you for.
So I still have a little list that, that this man, this man right over here made on the round schoolhouse recommendations and. You've gotta do that too, we're gonna, we'll attack that, hopefully attack that in the spring, and boy, once we get to that point. It's all, everything, it pretty much all be concentrated on the church, which police leave no land in terms of effort and finances. Pretty much it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, my brief report, I was losing contact with FEMA today, we, they're just waiting on getting the. Culvert numbers and locations for the two culverts, uh, between. Bennett Road and. What's the other B road?
Between Bennett and.
No, B. But Bennett and, it's in Putney, what's the other road, Bennett and. Banning Road, that, that had some damage, and Mark and I are gonna meet on Friday at eleven to pull the maps, get the numbers. And confirm and send that information in, uh, that's the only thing that's, that's FEMA is waiting on. We tabled the brick graph, but we will be review, reviewing that, uh, I was glad to be able to talk about the town report. We're in good shape, we're gonna be meeting, uh, we would stand on Tuesday at one P M. I do wanna confirm, though, that. We are meeting at night, the town voted to have their town meeting.
Yeah.
On the Monday preceding the first Tuesday, so it's March sixth. And I would like to, just from confirming that now, because if that's an article that you wanted to go back to a different time. I don't know, but if, if, I'm not, no, no, we're following you, that would be something else to think about if you wanted to bring it up. Before we put this.
Is the town happy with it or something?
Yeah, a question like that, I wasn't implying that I was unhappy with it, I just, from memory, thought it was. And I just got through looking at V L C T stuff and they said the second Monday in March. So, and I remember that every meeting I've gone to, except for one, was during the day, so I, it just didn't click that there had been a change. And then, and then, so I, I apologize for wasting everyone's time.
Yeah, then we had the two years with COVID, so, 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 so I would like to, uh, you know, I'll have to notify Suzie's Little Peanuts that we will have use of that building. As per the lease on Monday, and if for some reason we have to move the meeting. For a time and place, we'd be to the following day, the seventh, for example, if it went over or, or needed to go to a second day. So I will notify Suzie's Little Peanuts of that. Suppose we don't have a quorum.
Or what?
Well, suppose three of us couldn't make it on a Monday. Yes, you know, saying we can't run the meeting, or sup, sup, supposed, there's no power in the, or supposed power, whatever.
That's a good thought.
You need to have that second possible, but Suzie's Little Peanuts, and that is for the March second, Monday.
That's probably why David put everything back one day, because he, he knew. And, and it didn't click with me, you know, it was a nice way of him trying to do that.
So that's it for me. Any other reports or discussions by members of the select board at this time?
That's not even important enough, but I can't remember.
That's good.
All right, so then I'm gonna move on to the next thing is warrants, uh. Payroll warrant, um. I wanna make a point that I looked and before I, I have posted note here, I noticed my social security number is wrong. So did you check the, the last, so your social security number is correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Mine's wrong, I know one number.
Wow, no, mine's correct.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna, my age and birthday, forty five. So I just have Judy to come over and then, because I don't have a six, social security number, it's in dust. All right, so then, so I'm gonna make a motion. Yeah.
That seemed like craziness when you're filing.
All right. Yes.
They didn't catch up with Trump, did they?
I'm gonna make a motion that we, April warrant, twenty-three, twenty-seven. Dated January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of five thousand. Eight hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mister Noga, any discussion? Only discussion is that, that social security has to be changed. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven for five thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any, uh, motion passes unanimously. We'll pass this now for you to sign it. Before I make a motion for the accounts payable, I noted the following two invoices. And I'm questioning, I'm not, this, the accounts payable warrant can remain as is. But I'm questioning why they're not paying the full amount. The invoice amount is what we're paying, but we owe, it says the invoice amount is one hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Please pay this amount, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, so it seems that there is a.
Mistake.
Well, with, 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 this is for the Brattleboro South, I'm gonna pass this, take, take a look at those two gentlemen. Before I move to, um, I'm gonna ask Judy to, to tell us why.
Oh, there is a correction. I don't know if you noticed my email this afternoon, I believe this payroll, uh, this accounts payable warrant. Should be number twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
Ooh.
I emailed Judy and asked if she, she, uh, because there already is a twenty, uh, twenty-six. It was last month, last meeting's number, and you look at their, they're two digits apart. And even numbers are for accounts payable and odd numbers are for payroll, so this should be twenty-three, twenty.
Motion we all amend it.
Yeah.
Sure, Stan. I mean, I'm gonna see what she put in, but I'm asking her, why aren't we paying the whole bill, why are we carrying a, a cost? A billing?
That's weird. I thought maybe it was the one where they were putting the two digits together and it was a discrepancy, something happened.
And it, it does make sense, but it is kind of. The, the balance was the first digit, let me just double-check that. And then there was a payment made. We can do this faster hand by hand. Looks like they put the outstanding balance that had been a forwarding balance. And then we went and made a payment of the five ninety-four fifty-two, which is zero, two, eight. Three, three.
I don't think that.
Still doesn't.
Doesn't come out, so I'll take.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, that's it.
We're just paying the invoice, but somewhere along the line, there was an invoice must not have been paid because we're carrying a balance.
It all makes sense.
It does?
Yeah. They, they, it's, it's a crazy setup, the first number is what was outstanding.
Yes.
We paid this amount.
Yes.
And then there was an additional charge later in December of one ninety-nine thirty-six. So they added the one ninety-nine thirty-six for the difference between the nine thirty-two seventy-two and the five seventy-four. Which was three thirty-eight twenty, and they added the three thirty-eight twenty to the one ninety-nine thirty-six, which is the five thirty-seven fifty-six, which is the amount they say pay.
But we're not paying that.
We're not, what are we paying?
We're paying the one ninety-nine.
Oh.
That's insane, she's paying.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So both of them, so that's, so, so that's the question that I have on here, she.
Well, what does this one say?
Same, same thing, she's paying the invoice, she's paying for this invoice. And she, but she.
Yeah, unless she's paid it and they haven't caught up with it.
Yeah, but that's.
You're right, I see what you're kinda, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'd like to make a motion. To. We'll make a motion to approve it, and then we'll discuss it and modify, correct, and then we'll vote. Cause we gotta change the number. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant twenty-three, twenty-six, dated. January fourth.
Did you want twenty-six or twenty-eight? Are we gonna amend that too?
I guess we have to amend it, right?
I don't know. Long as it all works out.
That's why, that's how, that's why I'm trying to figure out the.
Okay, I see, I see what you meant when you said that, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, accounts payable twenty-three, twenty-six dated. January fourth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of three thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce, discussions, three items, item one. The check warrant report should be numbered twenty.
Twenty-three, twenty-eight.
Twenty-three, twenty-eight. And I wanted to also have the treasurer. Describe why we're not paying the full invoice amount. For the, for Brattleboro salvage. So, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the, um, Sam?
I'm wondering, since the number that we're questioning. So, so it's like, how do I say this, I guess what it is, is we're allowing a significant error. In one case, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and some change, in the other case, I don't know the exact numbers, didn't calculate it.
We're underpaying.
We're, we're underpaying.
She's gonna have to catch up to them next time.
So next time.
Yeah, she's gonna have to answer us, maybe there's something we don't know.
Okay.
And, and that's why I put.
That sounds good, thank you for explaining.
Okay, um, so all those in favor of approving the amended accounts payable warrant twenty-three, twenty-eight. In the amount of three thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents, may, uh, all those. Favor, signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed, hearing none, amended motion passes, signature. I placed out in front of you the regular mail that came in, um, the only thing noting is that the window companies. Rec, uh, what, had a question about not receiving their deposit, but it crossed in the mail. So, um, and they also are using the. Address of the church instead of the address of the town allied window, but I did check and we did approve payment and the check did go out last month. On the twenty-first of, of, uh. But I did check and we did approve payment and the check did go out last month on the twenty-first of, of, uh, of December. We got a letter from Fresh Coat, which we should keep on file, which is for, um, doing paving, crack sealing, seal coating and lawn striping, uh, the company. So we do have that, uh, ask Guy to file this, and, um, just regular email. And what is, what's this, um?
What's the CLA and C O?
Oh, the CLA. So did you get, I said this, but this is the CLA, uh, for the town people I study results. The common level of appraisal is eighty-five point one nine percent. And the C O D, coefficient of dispersion, is fifteen percent. Uh, isn't that beyond the, that, that
The limit is twenty in both cases.
The limit is twenty in both cases.
So we're, we're, we're well within
Within, I thought it was within ten, okay, yes. So this should be filed?
Uh, I, I made a copy, which I brought home with me, but there should be a folder or file that the lister should maintain with that specific document.
Okay, I'll listen to file this.
Uh, how was the? Ellen?
Ellen, of listers?
Listers.
Okay.
Supposedly, uh, well, supposedly, it looks like it was sent to the, the town and the lister and the select board. So there should be two other of those floating around, if I read the bottom of it correctly.
Oh, okay. All right, um Just write me a copy of it, please.
That would be good to have it when we do finish that last, that last second, second of, second of Putney Mountain Road.
Okay, all right, so I said, set in the agenda for the next meeting on January eighteenth. Of course, we'll talk about the town meeting and town report. Uh, we could talk about the brick grant again, favorite thing. Uh, any FEMA updates and anything else to be arranged, correct? All right, anything else, please let me know. At this time, I'd like to make an adjournment and see things made, look at this, eight fifty, it's every eight fifty.
So?
We need to adjourn.
Yes.